We'll call to order the regular meeting, West Valley City Council. And close my study meeting. Some I lost my regular. Or slow. We have a quorum present. Let's see. One, two, three, five. Well, I don't see Councilman Nordfeldt or Councilman Fitisimano. Are they not on your list, Nicole?
All council members are here, Mayor.
Okay, for some reason mine aren't showing. Okay. Mr. Participant, all council members are present. With that, we'll go next to our minutes of April, excuse me, April, May 19th, 2020.
I move for approval of our minutes for May 19.
Second.
Okay, I yes, I have the wrong agenda.
I amend the motion to the correct date then.
Oh, that's why, because it had a different name, but it's called Live Media. Okay. Then the motion to approve the minutes of May 26th, and did we have a second? Yeah, and you got that, Nicole. Okay. Then, any comments? Seeing, hearing none? All in favor? Well, without objection, the minutes will be approved unanimously. Is there any objection? Hearing no objection, the minutes are approved. Then our public comment period, we have at least two, as I understand it. Nicole, would you invite the first of those?
Yes, sir. The first person is Esther Olchuski, and I apologize if I said your last name incorrectly. But you are good to go ahead and speak.
You'll introduce yourself by name and address. That'd be great.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
All right, my name's Esther Olchuski. My address is 4409 South, 5400 West. And my concern is we have a lot of construction trucks going down our street to take care of the repairs on 4100 South. And they are carrying large trailers of gravel and sand. And they're speeding, and I don't know if something can be done about putting in temporary speed bumps or other measures to slow down and reduce the traffic that is on our street, especially these huge trucks. That's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that was on 5400 West. I believe so. Next, Nicole.
We have Jim Beesock, and Jim, you are good to go.
Thank you. I want to thank you all for finally changing our city's status. It's great to see things getting back to a little bit of normality. I would also like to thank West Valley PD. I saw several of the officers on TV. I was not downtown, but they responded downtown when they were needed, along with Wes Jordan and Unified, several others. And acted very professionally. So I wanted to thank them for always being there. Like I've said many times, West Valley has the best police department in Utah. There was also a blurb that came across the news about Salt Lake County cutting $77 million out of their budget. That's a lot of money. Once again, I caution you guys spending any of the rainy day fund to, you know, I would rather see, you know, things delayed and stuff to see how this is going to go, because who knows what's going to happen in a few more months. That's all I have right now.
Okay, thank you. Nicole, is there anyone else who is pending?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. I would just ask Wayne, have you heard that about 5400 West before?
No, sir. And I don't have any other comments tonight, but I'll have Mr. Willardson contact the lady.
Okay. The other thing is a mention about the county budget. If I remember correctly, the county budget is significantly larger than ours. Is that correct? Isn't it like close to a billion dollars or something?
Yes, sir. Their budget approaches a billion dollars on an annual basis. I'm not sure what the exact number it is, but it is very close to that.
Yeah. I would mention, because I said on TRCC, the Tourism Recreation Culture and Convention, that particular budget is down by 40% because it's the tourism and, you know, rental vehicles taxed. And of course, those businesses were shut down, and so the revenue was significantly reduced. We don't even have that in our budget, thank goodness, because that's quite a drop. So there are different dynamics with the county, just so that just thought I'd mention that. Very different situation with the county. With that, Wayne said he didn't have any other comments. So any council member comments? I've already done mine, so. Hearing none.
Mayor?
Yes.
Just a amen to what Mr. Beesock said about our police and how they reacted downtown. I watched all on TV and they I was able to pick them out, and they were very professional and kudos to our department for training them properly.
Very good, very appropriate comment. With that, then, we're through with the public comment period. We now go to our public hearings. The first one is for our reopening our 2019-2020 budget. That's the budget that will end at the end of this month. In order to get our budget set properly, we do need to make these final adjustments. If I remember correctly, there was a year where we didn't make a few adjustments. And we got dinged pretty hard in the audit and by the state auditor, if I recall both. But I may be off on that, but I do know that we do need to make those adjustments so that our budget does reflect those changes. Most of those are grants, additional funds that come in, so we could spend those. Some, I don't didn't have it up in front of me, but I think there weren't much in the way of carry forwards. But there were a number of other items. Yeah, oh, there were two rollovers for minor amounts. And then a few grants. And of course, the most notable of those, 333,000 in connection with pandemic. And the rest were pretty standard. There was 236,000 related to funds from the county for earthquake assistance. And then our lease that we're doing the funding for our upgrades at the Maverick Center. Anyway, those are kind of some of those. Mostly is a pretty routine. With that introduction, I will open it for public comment. Nicole, is there anyone online to comment on this in our public hearing?
No, sir, it doesn't appear so.
All right. Then there being none, which is not surprising. We will close the public comment period. We'll bring it back to the council.
Move to approve ordinance 20-23.
Second.
Properly before us, any further comments on ordinance 20-24, no, excuse me, 20-23? Hearing none, we'll turn to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Fitisimano?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeldt?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, next, we have our application Z-3-2020 filed by Richard Deffah. This is zone change agricultural to R18. This is on property at 3793 South, 5725 West. And this particular one, they're taking the property, it's located out close to the Mountain View Corridor, a street that runs next to that. And that's going to be put into homes, and they're putting in five lots. It's R18, but I think the smallest lot was 8400, and the average was higher. There's a couple of 1,200 square foot lots on Little Cul-de-sac at the end of that street. And so that's probably the only thing I would mention there. In conjunction with this, we will do ordinance 20-24 for the zone change and Resolution 20-68 for the development agreement. It's one and a half acres. So that's why it does not need to go to RE. It's a smaller piece of ground. With that introduction, then, I'll open the public comment period. Nicole, is there anyone online to comment to this issue?
No, sir.
Hearing no one, having no one waiting in the queue, we will close the public input portion and bring it back to the council for any motion or comments or questions.
I move for approval of ordinance 2024.
Second, ah, there it comes. Okay, properly before us, any further comments? Hearing none to our city recorder.
Councilman Nordfeldt?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Fitisimano?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next.
I would move for approval of Resolution 20-68.
Second.
Properly before us. Any other comments? Hearing none to our city recorder.
Councilman Fitisimano?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeldt?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Mouse in the right place. Next, we go to resolutions. We have our general resolutions 20-69. This is an amendment to a development agreement for property at 6222 South on SR111. This is a phase of the project and a modification to put some additional units in there. And in conjunction with that, with those updates, there were some additional, if you will, options included, a little bit larger units, more amenities, and so forth in this phase. And so that is the issue before us, to amend this development agreement to the council.
Mayor, I move for approval of Resolution 20-69.
Second.
Properly before us, any further comments? Hearing none to our city recorder.
Councilman Nordfeldt?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Fitisimano?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next resolution is 20-70 to enter an agreement with Select Health for insurance for our city employees. This will be for the fiscal year starting July 1st, 2020, and going through June 30th of 2021. Select Health has been providing our benefits for the past 14 years. And this particular time, it changed a little bit with the fact that we are self-insuring for our regular benefits, but we do still have catastrophic coverage. And by self-insuring, we actually have a little better cost within conjunction with that. That is the issue before us. This is a benefit provided to our employees, and it's simply a continuation of that same benefit. With that introduction to the council for any additional comments or motion.
Move for approval of Resolution 20-70.
Second.
Properly before us, any further comments? Hearing none to our city recorder.
Councilman Fitisimano?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeldt?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution 20-71. This is to prove a cooperative agreement between ourselves, the city, and UDOT for construction of infrastructure on and around Crystal Avenue. Since we have funds coming to this project from UDOT, this is for sidewalks improvements along Crystal Avenue. Crystal Avenue is a street that feeds both east and west for elementary school students. One to the public charter school, American Preparatory Academy. This also, I believe, will be used to some degree for the students going to Redwood Elementary. There currently is no sidewalk. In the wintertime, when there's snow or whatever, students must walk in the street because you can't plow dirt, snow plow dirt very well. But anyway, it's a real plus for the Chesterfield neighborhood and for those schools, and especially for the safety of the students. With that introduction, then, that's $344,000 of state funds. That is before us to the council.
I move for approval of the Resolution 20-71.
Properly before us, any other final comments? Hearing none to our city recorder.
Councilman Nordfeldt?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Fitisimano?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we go on to our consent agenda, Resolutions 20-72 and 20-73. These are both authorizing purchase, right-of-way purchase agreement, warranty deed, and temporary construction easement. One on South Market Street at 3888, and the other at 390 South Red Wing Street. These are in conjunction with roadwork that we are doing. When we do major improvements, other than just an overlay, we are required to update the sidewalks to be ADA accessible. And that's the work that will be being done there, in addition to the asphalt, the sidewalks. And that's the purpose is, we'll have more of these in the future. I know I have two on next week's agenda. With that introduction, then, to the council.
Move for approval of the two items on the consent agenda.
Second.
Property before us, any final comments? Hearing none to our city recorder.
Councilman Fitisimano?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeldt?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. That's all our regular agenda, since we do not have a closed session. There's no business to take care of there. Appreciate you all joining in on this, and Wayne, especially appreciate the staff, their work. As Don pointed out, the police department and the great work that they were doing. But all our staff gradually, I guess, coming back, some into the office to work, slowly starting to move in that direction. We we did not change anything. We we will continue doing the electronic meeting until some point in the future, at least till next week, since we haven't changed that. Although some are looking forward to that very anxiously. For the time being, we'll do this. If that actually works, the stuff in the council room, why, in the near future, we may actually hold some meetings in there. We'll have to get some feedback on how that worked, Wayne. I have a picture on my screen here, but it's been frozen most of the time, so who knows? Anyway, with that, we're done. So
Mayor, we have three more meetings.
With our general, with our regular council meeting, yes. What I really wanted was a motion to adjourn. I'm done.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Without objection, we are adjourned. Hearing no objections, that's unanimous.
We'll call to order the meeting of the RDA. Note that all members of the RDA are present. And look at the minutes for May May 5th of 2020. Is there a motion on the minutes?
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Is there any objection to the minutes? Hearing no objections, I will assume that they are approved unanimously. Any report from our chief executive officer?
None tonight, sir, thank you.
Okay, we do have a public hearing scheduled, two of them in fact, to accept public input regarding the reopening of the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget. Ms. Kamak, do we have anybody signed up to speak to that?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing then, and to the RDA. To chair, I move for approval of Resolution 20-07.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded properly before us. Ms. Kamak, would you take a vote, please?
Mr. Fitisimano?
Aye.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Mr. Hune?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Nordfeldt?
Yes.
And Chairman Christensen?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move to our next item, public input regarding the fiscal year 2020-2021 budget. Is there, it doesn't look like we need to have a public hearing on that. We'll turn it over to the agency.
It is a public hearing.
Yeah, Ms. Christensen, we do need to open a public hearing.
And we'll open a public hearing. Ms. Kamak, do we have anybody in line for the public hearing?
No, sir.
Then we'll close the public hearing and turn it to the agency. Thank you for the correction.
I would move for approval of Resolution 20-08.
I would move for approval of resolution twenty dash zero eight.
Second.
Properly before us, any comments? Ms. K Mac, we'll turn it over to you for the vote.
Mr. Nordfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Hune?
Aye.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Fifty Samanu?
Aye.
And Chairman Christensen?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. One more motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Any objection? Hearing none, we are adjourned. I call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Housing Authority. Know that all members of the agency are present. Our first item of business is approval of the minutes from the meeting held May fifth, twenty twenty.
I move for approval of the minutes of May fifth?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Without any objection, we will consider the minutes approved unanimously. Don't see anybody making any objections, so that will be considered the vote. We, Mr. Powell, any report from the executive director tonight?
No, sir. Thank you.
We have two budgetary items. Uh, the first will be a public hearing regarding reopening the fiscal year twenty nineteen twenty twenty budget to receive input from the public. Uh, we'll open that hearing now. Ms. K Mac, is there anybody to speak to this?
No, sir.
Uh, since nobody is, uh, signed up to speak, we'll close the public hearing and bring the matter back to the agency. With the authority.
I move for approval of resolution twenty dash zero three.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. K Mac, would you take the vote, please?
Mr. Fifty Samanu?
Aye.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Hune?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Chairman Bueller?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Our next item of business is the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget, resolution twenty dash zero four. Uh, this also requires public hearing. We'll open the public hearing at this time. Ms. K Mac, is there anybody to speak to resolution twenty zero four?
No, sir.
We'll close the public hearing and bring the matter back to the authority for any action. Move for approval of resolution twenty dash zero four.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Ms. K Mac, would you please take the vote?
Mr. Nordfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Hune?
Aye.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Fifty Samanu?
Aye.
And Chairman Bueller?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
That concludes our business tonight. Uh, we look for one final motion.
Motion to adjourn?
We have a motion to adjourn without objection. Seeing no objection, we will stand adjourned. Thank you.
I call to order the meeting of the building authority. Note that all of our members are president, are present. And the next item is the approval of our minutes from May fifth.
Move for approval of the minutes of May fifth, twenty twenty.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes without objection. The minutes are approved. Is there a report from our executive officer? No, sir. Thank you. All right, we have two items before us tonight. The first one is the reopening of our fiscal year twenty nineteen twenty twenty budget. Any comments before we open this up for a public hearing? All right, I'll declare the public hearing open. Ms. K Mac, is there anyone here to speak to this?
No, sir.
Okay, then we will close the public hearing and return to the board for action.
I would move for approval of resolution twenty dash zero three.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, we'll turn to our secretary for the roll call vote.
Mr. Fifty Samanu?
Aye.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Mr. Hune?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
And Chairman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have our budget for the next year, twenty 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 twenty-one. And we'll receive any public input for that unless there's some comment or all right, so let's open the public hearing for this, this budget.
Uh, no one signed up, sir.
Okay. And we'll close the public input for this budget and return to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, this is for approval of resolution twenty dash zero four.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, we'll have the roll call vote then, please.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Hune?
Aye.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Fifty Samanu?
Aye.
And Chairman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, that concludes all of our business for this evening. One final motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Without objection, we are adjourned. Have a great night.
Send to you. Thank you.
Thank you all.